Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council Meeting. Today is Monday, April 25th. I'd recommend you have the record show that our city attorneys, city planners, city engineer, all council members are present along with our assistant city administrator and our city administrator. At this time, I'd like to invite you to join us on the Pod of Agents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is our open forum. We don't have anything listed in this order on the agenda, but my first item of business is going to be to acknowledge the service that we've received from Ross. So we have a certificate of appreciation for him, so I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium for audience members online and in person. We are thanking him for his 10 years of dedication to our city, and we are really sad that he's moving along, but he does not move too far. He's actually moving to Wright County, so we will still see him. We hope to have some great projects with county-city collaborations. Since he sees all the future growth in our community of how the county can best benefit him. So, you know, it's not goodbye forever. It's, we will see you again, but we again appreciate all that you have done. So I will open it up to council members if you want any to comment, staff, don't leave it too long, and then any closing comments from Ross, and then we will take a photo with Ross.
If we could leave with Dan and Adam's comments for me, I'd appreciate it.
You're still an employee here, so. All right, Tom.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say it's been a privilege working with you for the past many years that you've been here. You've done so much for the city. You've left your stamp on this community, and that the citizens of Atsigo are forever grateful. As I told you, it's kind of one of those bittersweet moments. From my perspective and more of a selfish perspective, it's hard to see you go. I wish that you'd stay. At the same time, I understand that it is an opportunity for you, and I can't do anything but wish you all the best in the future, and I'm glad we'll still have a relationship, but you'll be missed.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes.
And I second what Tom says, plus thank you. Thank you for your input with our, also our subcommittee too, with our planning with City Hall and Public Works expansion. Great job. Thank you very much for your tenure here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I actually don't think you. I am pretty disappointed that you're choosing to leave. I appreciate you very much, Ross, and I think you know that. I would stress that many, many times. You're a good act, and I appreciate everything you've done. I kind of wish you well. I kind of like wish that, I don't know, again, maybe get like the worst truck there is to drive.
Well, Mark's in the audience, so I can make sure.
Yeah, it's not really like, no AC would be good.
There you go. AM, AM radio, no tape, no A-track, nothing. Yeah. Radio delete. Awesome.
Yeah.
Perfect. No AC.
I wish I could say something else, but that's it. That's all you get.
Thank you.
Ross, I just want to say congratulations. This is a big leap. This is awesome. So good for you. You're not going to go far. I still see you.
Yep.
So, you know, you've done great things here for the city, and you're going to do great things for Wright County as well. So I just wish you the most and best, so good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I will now finish with, you know, I got to interview and chose to take on this idea of having our own park and rec department, and from day one, I believed in you, and I still believe in you, and I, it's exciting to see you kind of spread your wings. I was hoping that to the county level, because you're doing such great things here. But, you know, you created a foundation here for all of the residents to enjoy. We built a lot of parks, trails. You know, just even your relationships that you have with all of our sports organizations, residents that come in. You'll be very proud of that, because it's something that I don't think people get to do that in their careers, but you started this, and you will be greatly missed. And I get a little choked up whenever we talk about you leaving, but I really know that. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Staff, any comments from you guys? Okay, never mind. They're very excited he's leaving, I guess. Okay, you guys have still a few more days to work with them.
Ross did a very good job of challenging me and my position. Pushing, pushing my way of thinking, which I do appreciate learning from him. Definitely had some unique perspectives, and I appreciate that. We talk frequently, probably once a day, about many different things, and been a great coworker, and I wish you the best of luck at Wright County.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, Ross, congratulations.
Is this being recorded right now?
I'm reading it down to Ross.
I hope you take everything that you learned from your time at the city of Atsigo to Wright County. Paved trails, insect management, presentation skills, reading from your iPad, grass, technology, et cetera. So it's been great working with you. We both lost a lot of hair through the years, so. Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Ross, I just wanted to thank you for being a great friend and a great workmate. I think you're the loudest of all. And just the banter that went on between us over the next. I'm going to miss that.
Yeah, I'm too.
Ross, I can guarantee you I'll never take over your office when you're working at Wright County.
That's right. I remember. That was like our first meeting.
We needed a place to have a conference meeting, and somebody said, use that office. And we were in there for like a couple hours, and Ross came back and he said, who do you keep in my office? So I won't do that to you at Wright County.
I appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Since everyone else is saying stuff. Congratulations, Ross. You'll be very much missed. Only worked with you for a year, but a lot of good times, so good luck and glad to see you go.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I see Kevin's here, Adra. Nope.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, I will miss working with you, Ross. I don't know who's going to make fun of all the other staff when you're not there, and who else is going to help start the book club.
I'll volunteer. For the book club.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say one thing, one thing you notice when you hear everybody talking with Ross moving on. It's a lot about the relationships that you've built over time, whether it's in the community with sponsors, sports, the people sitting here, the council, the staff and everything. And even though it's moving on, it's, the relationships will continue. It's just, it'll just be in a different basket. A positive thing, those relationships we build over time.
All right, this time, Ross, do you have anything or?
I just, I mean, I just want to thank everybody. This has been a great opportunity for me for the last 10 years. I can't imagine being where I am now 10 years ago, and learned a lot from everybody, from all the staff and the, everybody on this side as well. On this side, it's been, you know, it started off, it was, you know, 10 years ago, it seems like it was 30 years ago from where we were to where we are today, and it's just a reflection of everybody here, and they just keep adding great people onto the staff, and certainly will be missed, and but it's nice that I'm not going that far. We have a county, we have a park right here in Atsigo, so it gives me excuses to swing by, 7:30 meetings with Adam. I certainly will. I know he's going to miss those dearly, so.
So basically, you should go check out the county park and then just send emails.
Yes, yeah. There you go.
He's probably still here.
All right, so at this time, I will ask the council to come down. Adra, can you get a photo? With Ross's certificate?
Thank you. Thank you.
Like to be able to touch upon and footblow.
I played volleyball.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, Ross, I'd leave you at Mark Deliden on for open forum. Fracture. I'm looking at Adam fracture that we had talked about.
Yeah, if you would like to speak, Mark.
Thank you. Mark Deliden, Wright County Commissioner for District 3, which is all of Atsigo, Eastern St. Michael, and a small part of Dayton that's actually in the Wright County. Just one quick note regarding Ross. I had heard a lot of good things about him. I guess I'm going to have to keep an eye to make sure that all the county park funding doesn't all end up over Atsigo. Since I'm going to be off the commissioner next year. Sounds like I'm going to have to keep an eye on.
Yes.
Make sure we at least get the same amount into St. Michael.
Yeah? Well, you're at the liaison for the park commission, right?
Yes, I was. Am, yes. And to answer, council members, dark wall, regarding the market value, homestead market value exclusion. We have heard that they are doing some adjustments. We've heard 1%. Yeah, which is ridiculous. So I do urge the residents and all you guys, anytime one of the legislators or the senators are in here, nail them on it, because this has been going on for years and years and years, and they have not done any adjustments. So when we meet with the legislators in December, January, for the last couple of years, we've been after them to say, with the values going up, this homestead exclusion value also needs to go up too, so. Maybe they heard us, let's change it for 1%.
It would be powerful if the cities in Wright County and the county itself, like a letter that everyone can sit there and agree on, and sit there and say, hey, this is some issues that we're facing. Yeah, I mean, the more people you have, the more traction we're going to get.
Yeah, and while you're at it, tell them that 64 different taxable parcels is a little on the ridiculous side, because that's what the state has, 64 different valuations of how it gets taxed, so.
Well, and as the assessors, when they were leaving, they said, you know, looking at what the exclusion is, you have half of our community that has no value from that, the values of the home there.
Yeah, well, not only that, but they went from a value last year to no value this year, just because, like I said, it hasn't kept up, so. Anything you guys can do, and the public, more we hone them, maybe they'll actually do something, because it's not in the county's hands, strictly state. And then the other reason I'm here, back when I was here in October, November, whenever it was, when we got the preliminary census results, right, Atsigo became the largest city. And at that point, I, I know it had come up, and we had no intentions of doing any changes for the first time, or redistricting for the first time, and I think it was 40 years. Every 10 years, they've always had to do redistricting, but when they redid the, when they did the district redistricting in 2012, after 2010 census, they made this district the smallest at that time, knowing that the growth would be over in this area. So when we seen that it all stayed within state parameters, so for the first time, we're not going to have to do it. So we had talked about it. We had mentioned it to this different cities that we represent, and there had not been any concerns brought up. Well, last week, at the Tuesday public hearing during our board meeting regarding the maps that weren't going to be changed, there was the mayor from Albertville and a resident of Atsigo had stopped in and spoke during that public hearing about their concerns, the way it's written now, and how they would like to see it. So I'm here since we continue the public hearing, and we'll be meeting tomorrow with that public hearing. I just want to hear from the council members on your concerns, if you want it changed. If you're not, if you don't, say, Michael, when I've talked to majority of the council members there, none of them have any interest in having things changed. But again, I wanted to hear it also from the city of Atsigo and what your concerns were. And if there's something that I haven't done, that when you go to elect somebody this November, you can make sure that they do it.
Comments?
And I don't have any qualms about anything at this, at this point. I just don't know what I'm trying to make. When you look at the map, just map one and map two, which Adam had shared with us. You can see the numbers are at the bottom, District 1, 5, and then the map. And so we're District 3, we've got Atsigo, St. Michael, and Dayton. And it just looks like we're growing. And I'm just trying to bring things up, because again, we are a growing city, and we are going to continue to grow. Albertville, maybe not so much, they remain a bunch of hurt people last census. And to just make things smoother and better for the city, my thought was to put Atsigo, Atsigo, and Albertville together, taking out St. Michael, if you can. So if we look and read from the administrator of Wright County, did the numbers, worked it together, you've got 100% threshold. And when you go back to map one, you can see that District 3, which is our district currently, is 30,192. Every other district is 28,000, 27,000, 26,000, so it's all over the board. It doesn't mesh well. So if you look at map two, where the option would be Atsigo, all of Atsigo, Dayton still, and then Albertville. What that relates to that, looking at District 1 through 5, we're not adding any districts. There are, all the numbers are within just, I mean, 28,000, 27,000. So very miniscule, whereas the old map, we were about 2,000 and some.
Sorry, we had a comment from Zoom that couldn't hear you.
So with that being said, so the new map then is then Atsigo, Dayton, and then Albertville, taking out St. Michael, where the numbers, then the threshold of numbers are, like I said, 27,000 and 28,000, which really kind of makes it all the same, if you will, versus what we are currently at. Has nothing to do with commissioners. I know Mark's up at the end of the year, and so is Christine. But that, that means nothing. I'm looking at it as a city perspective. What's best for the residents? What makes, it makes sense? And that's where I'm coming from. I don't see any cons in doing this. I just see pros. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm going to comment to, so, Adam, you have maps one up and map two, and so you show, Tina, you're saying you, you think map two makes more sense, moving us, adding us in with Albertville. I know comments were made at that meeting about, you know, we share things, and I could say, on the contrary, St. Michael and Albertville share a lot of things. I do think as growth happens, we are much more similar with St. Michael, and I guess I haven't seen that there's been a problem with my representation at the county commission level. So it does change, the vote is my understanding, so District 3, if it changed, which as you said, Mark is up, District 4 would also have to change and have to be voted on, because it changes enough. So you'd have District 1, District 4, District 3 that would have to change. So it does put something out there that, you know, does influence how things happen or have to change. I do also, I guess, I am a bit confused by it came this late to bring something forth. We did hear from it back from Mark. Mark was here in October, actually, when he brought it forward and said the county was not planning to redistrict. So I'd agree. I haven't heard from any residents. Mark, your comment at the commission meeting was that you hadn't heard from anyone else, and I've been contacted by also St. Michael that says that they have, they weren't looking to redistrict either, that they were looking to stay the same.
Tom?
Just, I mean, just so I get the facts right, I mean, District 4, we changed the boundaries where Albertville switched to District 3 and District 4, and took in the rest of St. Michael. Mary just had in 2020 an election, so she'd have to rerun again.
Correct.
Okay. I guess my, my biggest concern was that we were aware of this in October, and it was never brought to our attention. I called Steve. I actually talked with Jillian and expressed at least some of my concerns as far as we should have been looking at this a lot sooner instead of last minute, especially when it affects, you know, just more than Atsigo, it affects Atsigo, Albertville, St. Michael, and it does have an impact on Hanover and Rock. And the two commissioners now understanding that District 3, that there's going to be a new one in there. I just wish that we had been able to sit there and discuss this more, because when I talked to everyone, it didn't seem like St. Michael or Albertville had actually made the decision that they wanted to change the districts. And I think it would have been appropriate that we would sit down with all of us, all the, all the people that are involved at it, at accidents, that are, you know, try to weigh the pros and cons of, this is why we would go this route versus this route, especially when we just did, you know, a huge 131-page transportation, long-term transportation plan. And one of the biggest transportation deals on there is something that has big impact on St. Michael and Atsigo. And that's neighbor interchange. And, you know, and when we sit there and talk about looking 10 years out and everything, 10 years out, you might want to sit there and change things, but it might be different than what we're suggesting today. And I think it only makes sense, when you're talking about making a huge change like this, we take the time to go through kind of the proper channels to sit there and fully discuss it and fully weigh the pros and cons, and not just say, you know, it doesn't make a difference, or there's no downside to this, because we haven't had that open communication with our other neighbors that we have had good communications with in the past, especially when it comes to redoing something this bit. And I guess at right now, I haven't heard good reasons as to why we should switch from what has currently been proposed and what we've already agreed to.
Madam. I also, I, I read the news article from the county, and then I also watched the video, and I guess when you say it doesn't mesh well, I'm just wondering, what is the benefit of changing this? And what do we share with Albertville that you feel that that change should be made?
I never said we shared anything with Albertville, but we do share the fire. We do contract with them, so that's, that's it.
That's not sharing, that's, isn't it?
But first of all, I didn't say that either. So I don't know where that came from, but it makes sense, because we are, Atsigo and Albertville are together as far as where we are within the map versus stretching ourselves out to St. Michael. And the only thing that it's going to affect, I don't know, Madam Mayor, you had mentioned District 1. It's only going to affect Mary in District 4. She'll have to run again. And she seconded the, on Tuesday, she seconded the thought of this, so that's where she was okay with it. So it's really only going to affect District 3, which is ours, and District 4 in regards to changes. But it, I don't honestly see, we're going to have somebody new in District 3 as a commissioner. So, yeah, we need to make sure that they're for public safety, and they are for transportation, which those things are critical. I totally agree with that. So that's where, you know, when we bring somebody else in to District 3, which will be our new commissioner this year, okay, that's what we need to look for, but I don't, and, and right now, St. Michael has two commissioners. Why does St. Michael need two commissioners? They're the only, they're the only district that has two. I don't understand the point of that. We're bigger than St. Michael. We're going to continue to grow, and St. Michael is too, but we're not there yet where we can be on our own and add commissioners. That's not what I'm trying to do here. Maybe 10 years from now, maybe that'll be the case. I don't know. But as of right now, where it sits, I honestly don't see any cons to all any of this information. Again, I just don't understand why, you know, I don't like to use the word fair, but let's all have one county commissioner in our districts. There's five districts. There should be one commissioner per district, and it just makes more sense to have Atsigo and Albertville together versus splitting St. Michael.
Tom?
And Madam Mayor, I would, I would sit there and say this, if we were going to go down the road of looking at switching up the districts and Albertville and Atsigo being together, and St. Michael splitting from Albertville, and then splitting from Atsigo, we could have had also those discussions when St. Michael, Albertville, and Atsigo were sitting there and redistricting in our own city, changing the lines. St. Michael set their lines based on there being no district change, and Atsigo changed their lines based on their precincts. Their precincts. That would have been, it would have been good for Atsigo and Albertville and St. Michael to know that we were looking at changing that when we were having discussions also regarding that. And that's where it's, you know, this last minute, I mean, if you could sit there and point out, I mean, as far as services go, I mean, yeah, Atsigo and Albertville share fire services, but Albertville and St. Michael also share fire services. Not that that really impacts at the county level, but, you know, St. Michael and Albertville also, you know, in Hanover, they, they have to deal with the water there. I think they have a water board meeting tonight. uh, the water there. I think they have a water board uh, meeting uh, tonight.
Yeah, joint, joint powers.
So it seems like there's a lot more things that Albertville and Saint Michael are involved in and I can just tell you from a Atsigo perspective, as far as some of the future roads um, that are going to be impacted, that need to be changed and future interchanges that need to happen, working with Saint Michael, who is also growing, where Albertville is pretty much all built out, seems to make the most sense, at least for right now. I haven't heard anything why that would change.
But nobody's answered the question as to why Saint Michael needs two commissioners, and they've had it for ten years.
Right.
Well, I, I'd sit there and say in District, uh, uh, as far as District Three goes and Atsigo, we don't have anyone to the north of us and we don't have anyone uh, to the east of us. And Saint Michael, they obviously have, you know, Albertville, uh, Hanover, you know, we're surrounded by Saint Michael, Albertville, Monticello Township. Saint Michael is surrounded by Monticello Township, Atsigo, Albertville, Hanover, Rockford, and it, you know, stretches down into our Rockford Township. So they touch a lot more boundaries just essentially where they're located, where our geographic uh, locations kind of limits us. In the future, let's not say that uh, ten years from now, that that can be a discussion, but that would be a discussion that we would have with Albertville, with Monticello, with Saint Michael, uh, with those people that it would impact.
And to your comment, Tina, um, you, you made the comment that Mary seconded the, the vote. I have also seen an email from her though that she, you know, made a comment that she, you know, felt like she was thrown under the bus on that and was surprised that she hadn't heard it from any of her residents or the councils that she represents also, so.
I can't say why we are the only ones there. I mean, I, I don't know why people haven't spoke up, but I, I can't.
But that's the whole thing. Why didn't anyone speak up after October?
I don't remember.
I, I, I didn't hear anything.
In October.
I, I, I talked to Albertville, I talked to Saint Michael, I talked to our Adam. I, I, I was asking the question, did anyone bring this up before, you know, two people showed up on Tuesday and Saturday and said, we need to redistrict?
Did anyone know about it?
Yes.
Yes, in October.
Yes, Mark came in October, he was here October eleventh.
And he gave direction that they were not going, they're not looking at redistricting, so we were aware of that.
Why did they have a public meeting?
We approved the minutes, but they won't.
They have to.
By law. But we were all aware of that.
Of that, you know, doesn't mean that we can't open it up for discussion and there is time, they have until May third. They have time to look at this and to make changes if need be if it's approved. And now they have a second public meeting tomorrow morning um, to discuss this once again and to either approve it or deny it.
Just don't think it's fair to everyone that this impacts or this being brought up last, last minute.
I don't think it's fair to have, have Saint Michael have two commissioners either, but that's life.
And that, and that should have been.
There's different ways you can discuss this and have the meeting and if it's something that's gonna be worth the time and makes sense, which I think it does, then why not? Because we're not gonna be looking at this for another ten years.
But don't you agree that we should have been talking about this sooner if, if that's at least how you and uh, Gillian felt?
We had been. She had called, right, Tony, and nobody ever answered. She had questions in regards to it and nobody ever answered her questions. So we found out about this meeting and we went to the meeting and that's where we asked those questions that we wanted to learn from, besides going on the Tony um, website.
You might, you know, might correct, the decision needs to be made by May, May third?
It has to be submitted to the state.
Yes, and, and just for the record, yes, Mark was here. It was in October. Oh, I don't remember back in October, sorry.
Yeah, and, and I, I feel bad that nobody ever got back to um, Gillian, the mayor of Albertville. Nobody had ever heard from her. And if she didn't hear back from her commissioner, there's still four other commissioners that she can contact. Um, and we would all answer that question.
Yes, I mean, I think all of us know that we could.
Carol was the one that was talking, she never got back.
But Carol, the receptionist, okay.
So she didn't call her commissioner?
Oh, yeah, she tried to get in touch with Mary yesterday.
And you tried to call Mark?
I didn't call Mark, no.
Well, I'm sorry, not bad.
Do you anticipate more people at this meeting tomorrow night? Because again, it's when you say some
Tomorrow morning.
Well, tomorrow morning, excuse me, when you say some people don't wanna come forward, but I'm different, I have it in my mouth, it's you and Gillian were the only ones there. It just looks plotted or it's not, there, there's no real benefit right now, bringing this to the tenth hour. It, it just, I, I have a, I'm trying to understand it. And again, if you, what is the benefit? Sure, there might not be any cons right now, but what is the benefit of changing this right now? And you have a look on your face and I'm so confused as to what that is. We are a team up here and it feels very not like that.
You knew it back then too and
He was here in October, because there was no change. But you're bringing it right now.
Because you said no change, doesn't mean that we can't make the change.
It just, just.
And when he was doing the numbers, he agreed that this is the outcome and he sees, he sees how this is with numbers and the ten percent, it makes sense, moving forward with map two versus map one.
And, and, and just to keep this, I guess, for just uh, to the facts, if, if someone could sit there and explain to me the actual benefit, the only benefit that I heard is Saint Michael has two commissioners. Well, they might not, uh, when Mark doesn't fund, uh, someone from Atsigo, uh, could definitely uh, take over uh, that position. The potential for them to have to, uh, to me, this, you know, at the last minute, making this decision, I think is not good with the relationships that we've built with uh, Saint Michael and the future issues that we have to deal with at the county level by doing this last minute uh, a change. And I just can't see the benefit in changing what's already been proposed out there. If things were done differently and we had discussed this back in October, maybe we could have uh, uh, worked something out, talked to Saint Michael, been open uh, partners with, with our neighbors. And I, I think that's important. If we made a change right now, we haven't had as councilors sitting down with Saint Michael and had any discussion with them as to, hey, we're just gonna uh, kick you out. That, that just doesn't make sense. I wouldn't wanna do that to Albertville either.
Well, I'm not, you're taking it to an extreme. I'm not saying that we're, we're kicking people out. I mean, that's, I'm doing this, this, this makes sense for our city. I'm not, this isn't for one person here, one person there. It makes sense. And, and even just because Mark will no longer be here, it doesn't matter, District Three and Four are still tied into Saint Michael, so they're always gonna have the two councils or the two commissioners, if we keep it as such. If we change it, then they're down to one, because you had mentioned that when he leaves, there's only gonna be one. There's still gonna be two commissioners. Which I, nobody's answered that question for me as to why they have two commissioners. Um, I don't know if there's something behind that. I don't know. That's what I'm trying to find out and nobody can answer that for me.
Madam Mayor.
Um, but moving forward, it just, it makes more sense and I don't know if, if you don't wanna get together with Albertville or what. I, I just, to me, it just makes sense for our city to do this, because again, I don't really wanna wait ten years to see what that outcome looks like. I don't see that there's any cons. I'm not doing this to throw anyone under the bus or to be mean to Saint Michael or anything like that. I just think it's the right thing to do for the city.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, regarding um, Saint Michael having two commissioners, um, up until twenty-twelve, twenty-ten was when they had to start re, thinking about the redistricting. The city of Buffalo for twenty years or so had three commissioners. So it's not without precedent in the county, but again, it was based off of the populations and the way it was. Saint Michael's growth is on the western part of the city. That's where the largest amount, I don't think there's a whole lot at this point where they can put in much more residential development on the east side, County Route nineteen. So my guess is that in twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two, when they uh, when new re, new redistricting maps come out, I think it will look a lot different. And my guess, because of the requirements that districts have to be contiguous, but joining cities, that Albertville will possibly back end up in with Saint Michael again at that point. Unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball to be able to tell what populations are gonna be and where the growth will actually happen. Who knows? Everybody could move out to South Haven because they like it or something. But it makes a difference to me. I represent the re, the residents of Atsigo, Dayton, and half of Saint Michael. Whatever the, the councils wanna do, it is, it's fine. So I have no dog in the fight, horse in the race, however you wanna call it.
You're a resident still of the county.
Well, I'm a resident of Saint Michael, yes. So I like to.
And you represent this right now, so. Yeah. Um, the meeting is tomorrow. Adam, are you planning to attend that?
Mayor, do you have it blocked up on my calendar?
And the meeting is at nine-thirty tomorrow morning, or I should say, the public hearing part of it.
Sure.
The board meeting starts at nine and then we have the public hearing at nine-thirty.
Yes.
Well, who makes the decision on map one and map two? Is that tomorrow then?
The county commissioners.
Commissioners, okay. And Madam, uh, to just go a little bit uh, further, what kind of Mark is saying is he's wanting to hear back from his, you know, uh, from the city, you know, Saint Michael Atsigo to sit there and see where they, they stand. And Madam Mayor, at this point in time, I see no need in changing uh, the districts and I don't know if there's necessarily a motion uh, Adam, that you need or just uh, essentially a direction uh, from the council or at least on the authority of, of the council?
I think that consensus is.
Not necessarily a, a city issue. I think Commissioner Dahlin has been here to gather input from the council and that, that is varying. He is the, one of the ultimate decision makers and he's gathered the input that he needs to help make the decision.
Yeah, you know, if, if you don't, if you want it changed, throw stuff at me. If you don't wanna change, I don't care.
I, I
I'm music alone.
I will say with the potential of the neighbor interchange, the Saint Michael, Atsigo, it's important because that is all based on county roads. And that finally happens, um, you know, to Tina's point when she said, why was there, you know, Saint Michael had two originally, I mean, I have the twenty-fifths census map. Here it is. There's where the districts were. We used to be District Two, which we used to be part of um, Monticello.
And Monticello Township, part of Monticello Township.
Yep, Monticello Township and the city of, well, the city of Monticello, Monticello Township and Atsigo, we were all in District Two at that time.
Oh, we, a little bit part of Dayton too, I think.
Oh, yes, Dayton was with us too, yes.
Well, I, I keep forgetting.
You have to have contiguous.
And again, Mark, like, and, and Mark, like you said, I mean, if we could be sitting there and changing everything right now, last minute and it's still gonna see, see the benefit, but ten years from now, we, we sit there and we do map two, we bring Albertville in, ten years, you know, later, we're kicking them back out again. Always been part of Saint Michael.
Yes, they have, when I was able to report, they've always been.
Yeah, uh, and I don't know what it's gonna bring, but my guess, with the growth that's been occurring now and for the last few years and what I've seen so far this year, I think redistricting will have to again take place in twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two, no matter what happens tomorrow.
And I will say, I do, you know, when, you know, when you did make the comment about you see Atsigo having your own, I would absolutely agree with you on that. I think that that would be nice and I do think that one day that that's going to be the case.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
No, absolutely. So I, 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 I see that we will one day have our own. We will be very similar to the Monticello, Monticello Township. Our population will be there. Um, you know, with the growth number, I don't know that it will happen in the next ten years, but it definitely will be on par for happening. And even if we've used the five-year model on our comp plan or a ten-year, that's, you know, kind of where it gets.
I'd also sit there and say, whoever's here in ten years, if they're looking at redistricting the districts, they will also have a chance to look at within their cities how they want to redistrict to, you know, align, align things. Because you can only, you can only do it by the district, so we have four, four districts in Atsigo, so. Yeah.
Four precincts, yeah.
We can essentially, you know, our one and all of them.
And it may happen. Again, we don't know.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much for being here.
Yep.
What are you, what are you gonna do, uh, all this free time?
Play with cars. I was working today and didn't get a chance to go home early. Those are on other people's cars. I'll be working on my own toys.
Have a good evening. Hey, thanks for all your
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take it easy.
All right, we are still on the open forum portion of the meeting. Anyone have any comments?
Yeah. Good evening. Charles Foster, Planning Commission, address sixty-one seventy Macklin Avenue Northeast, of course, that's Atsigo. See, some of this, as I look at these numbers, just being a numbers guy, being a controller and a CFO, I look at this and I go, why would Albertville wanna swap from four to three? And why would Atsigo even want that? So I look at, at Albertville being, their population's seventy-seven hundred and they aren't going anywhere. That's gonna be a constant number. I could see them maybe growing another ten percent at the most over the next ten years, they go to eighty-five hundred. If you're living in um, that portion of, the swing portion of um, District Four, that's already a ten thousand people and that's probably gonna grow. As a, as a resident of Atsigo, I'd be in favor of picking up Albertville, because my vote won't be diluted as much as it would be with the District Four, if you follow me. Because right now, we'll say that the population is roughly speaking, District Three is thirty thousand and it's eight thousand for Albertville. So you got a twenty-two, eight equals thirty. Right now, you got thirty plus you got the, the ten thousand from the Saint Michael piece and that's gonna grow. So you're gonna have a little bit, a, a change in the disproportion of those two, of the two districts. And that's kind of a, a, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, pretty obvious. But if, if I'm running in District Three and I'm just representing basically Atsigo, this is under the new, and Albertville, I'm gonna be catering or pandering to the, the Atsigo residents to get elected versus the um, other. But on the other hand, if I've still got, if I'm gonna run for that District Three and I still got part of the Saint Michael, I'm still gonna pander to, to my group of Atsigo. You know what I'm saying? So it's some, in some respects, it doesn't make a difference, but it does a little bit. The, the Saint, two represented from Saint Michael, the only reason I see that making any difference is if those two people are aligned in their thinking and they're gonna vote against Atsigo in any way. But I don't see that really happening, because the real power in the, in the, in the county is gonna be District Three and Four, because that's where the money is, that's where the growth's going, and so they're gonna push it. So if, if anything, two, one, two, and five aren't gonna see much growth, they're gonna be aligned against three and four in terms of where they want the money to go in the county, where the growth is and all of those kind of things, so. I guess my, my question is, why does Albertville wanna go to leave El, leave Saint Michael and go to, to Atsigo? Because they're gonna, if, but their bet must be is that Atsigo's gonna grow slower than Saint Michael and then their vote will be diluted. As I went to the, the, the other one, as I said in the beginning, if you follow me. Yeah, they're gonna be, they're gonna be eight, if they think Albertville's, if they think Saint Michael's gonna grow faster, they're gonna be eight of thirty-five or forty versus they're thinking Atsigo's not gonna grow as fast, so they're gonna be eight of thirty-two or thirty-three, so they get more votes, more vote or power by joining Atsigo, because they think Atsigo's gonna grow slower than Saint Michael. And I don't know where that bet is. I would guess Saint Michael's, they, they're a long ways from ninety-four and they'll see a lot of growth in that western section like, like Deliden was talking. But you look, you know, coming down um, nineteen and all that stuff where you build those homes, you can get on ninety-four a lot faster and get anywhere you want quicker than living in Saint Michael.
In, in nineteen and stuff, all those roads have been improved.
Right.
Kind of the the big future deals are going to be neighbor and, you know, I guess even more out in the future down at Jameson.
So, uh, that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are still in the open forum. Would anyone like to comment?
Scott Reiber, Packard Avenue. Um, I'm killing two birds with one stone. On the way here to discuss the, uh, to the open forum for the tax, property tax, uh, happened to. Walk, get past my neighbors walking down the road in the snow, by the way. It was snowing.
It wasn't storm when we got here.
Yeah, I, I, number one, uh, as as a resident of Packard Avenue and I, us, we all want to appreciate the change in the speed limit. That's been set for forty-five. Uh, so this isn't a complaint. This is a question. We'll take, we'll take the forty-five. Obviously, we hope that cuts down the drag race and eventually we'll find out. I've already seen one this year already. So. The question that was asked as I was coming here is great. But why not back to thirty? What's the reason?
Well, Ron can talk to that because you have a matrix.
Yep, thank you. We did put together a matrix to look at all the different types of streets throughout the city. Yours is considered rural residential. We set rural residential at forty-five due to the amount of access points and, uh. That that's basically the reason. And, yeah, it does see some, um, walkers and pedestrians. But it's it's not as heavily used as some of the other streets that we reduced for. Of course, we have other streets that are at forty, uh, that are more collector residential collectors and those have off-street. Um, bike paths included because they have a lot more walkers than, say, Packard. But that, that's the reason we put together a a pretty substantive.
That that explains.
Matrix that if you want to look at it.
Yeah.
When it gets, uh, it should be online already.
I I think, I think the residents understand that process. What's the, what's the argument that?
Well, I I don't think that it, if you, if you drive it at thirty.
Yeah.
That it's, it's just not.
I mean, it was that way for.
But people, for people actually driving thirty.
Well, just like forty-five, is that actually going to be forty-five?
Any, are any, any, uh, speed could be argued as to why it is, but we try to match the type of road with the speed. And that's what we're doing here. We have a rural residential street that has not too many access points. And not, not very high traffic levels in comparison to other city streets. And, you know, we we took all those things into account. We came up with.
Be there on a Friday when the, when Elk River is backed up.
Yeah.
Ron, would it be correct when you were looking at this, we were trying to develop the most defensible system that we could put out there to defend the change in the speed limit? And we didn't come up with, uh, uh, that policy. Then essentially it could be a pre-feral. So this is a way of trying to protect people driving slower on your road. If we. Changed it to a much lower.
Yeah.
Would more likely be not defensible, which.
Now, that's, that's an answer I can take back to the, the neighbors.
Yeah.
Is it legal? Or within the rules to put the slow children emblems up alongside the road?
Yeah, slow children isn't a, isn't a traffic sign that is allowed in the state of Minnesota. Children roll, they, and they move on and the signs stay.
No, no, then then they have grandchildren. And then they have great-grandchildren. And that's the phase a lot of my neighbors are in right now. They're, they're in the grandchildren and great-grandchildren phase.
No, they're, they're just not, they're not a sign that's in the, uh. In our manual to use. They've taken those.
I mean, can can they individually go out and put a sign?
Not within the right. Not within the city, right?
So.
These are for the city signs.
Okay, so that's, so when we see those, the people that are doing that are technically. Right, breaking the rules.
If they were in the right of way.
I mean, if.
And they were put on one of our.
Well, what's right of way on a, on a country road?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what, what is that number from the center line for a country road?
Yours is thirty-three feet.
From the center?
Yeah, from the center line.
Each way?
Yep, both directions.
I mean, you're practically up to my house.
I, probably not, uh, from, from the center line?
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet from the center of the road?
Yeah, the street itself is about.
I.
Twelve, fourteen feet.
You're going to wipe out half of my front yard.
Well, you got the ditch there. I mean, thirty-three feet is.
I just measured fifty feet to plant trees today.
It's not to the house.
Okay, no, not to the house. Like I say, half of my front yard.
So are you referring to like where people put the little green signs?
Yes, that's what they're asking for. I mean.
No.
So, so I, I would agree. You see them in people's driveways all the time.
What they do is it.
They put it out when they're playing and then they take it away. It seems, at least in our neighborhood, that's what I see.
Right.
It's not there all the time. These are like those little green guys.
I guarantee you they're not going to take them away at the ones.
Is that what you call the green guys? Like, right?
I saw orange throughout.
Mayor, the, the only concern there is so if they're placed in the right of way by somebody, they're considered abandoned property. Uh, and public work staff will go through and remove them from time to time as they're doing road maintenance. So. Um, and at that point, they're just disposed of. But otherwise, we, we don't typically address them.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for guidance because we have, we have kids scampering around out there and I don't, obviously, nobody wants to see them. Uh, get taken out, so.
Right, absolutely.
Anything you can offer that I can offer, I'll, I'll tell them, but.
If Jason has any ideas, I know, uh. Jason's in the back. I believe he's talked with your neighborhood group before. If he maybe wants to meet you after or even just a few minutes right now, maybe he's got some ideas for you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are still at the open forum portion of the meeting. Anyone else have any comments? All right, we will move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or? Then I need a motion.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the agenda that's written.
For a second.
A second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item three is our consent agenda. Motion would be in order.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda that's written.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Um, Adam here.
Yes.
We had the pleasure of having Mr. Dan looked at our O H P C meeting this month to review the comp plan. And, um. There's really nothing other, just, just, his presence was there.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Um, uh, for council things on my section, I did attend the two, uh, public east-west meetings that we had. One was held at Prairie View. I was the only one in attendance for the first ten minutes and then we had the other couple come in. And then the next evening we had it, uh, it was hosted at Atsigo Elementary and we had six people there, six people in attendance. So. Two of them came from my resident. But, you know, I will say, um, Danny did a really good job of presentation. He'll be coming to Public Safety, um, and Park and Rec next month, so.
Ross won't be there.
You know, that, maybe you saved it so Ross wouldn't be there. There you go. Um. I've, obviously, a little disappointing that, you know, we didn't have more resident input. Um, hopefully, people are using our, our my tools to, to give input, to give their chance. So.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, sorry. Um, I tried to give you guys a shout out through my phone when the discussion was open. There's still time for that?
I'm sorry, the, the open forum has closed and so I, I, I don't see who is talking here.
Um.
This is Ryan Thomas. I was in with my cell phone and I had it unmuted and I don't know why. I don't know, I wasn't online, but I'm on my computer now.
Okay, I'm sorry, open forum is closed and we are on our item four at this time. Okay, um, so moving on to commission updates, item one, heritage preservation. That was your update? All right, uh, Park and Rec Commission, uh, we were reviewing. Our baseball field updates and, um, it was, uh, discussed with, um, Ross, obviously, in his final, final, um. Park and Rec Commission meeting and that just plans for, uh, events that Connie and the rest of the staff have kind of rolling out moving forward. Next is Planning Commission, Tom. All right. Public Safety, Tina.
That would be you.
That, um, Tina was not present. I was there. We had the ambulance, um, were in attendance this evening or that evening. We had a line of present and as many of you guys have heard in the past, we kept talking about kind of changes with, without their lack of, um. People signing up for, to be a paramedic or to first responders. Um, so still kind of dealing with those, but they are looking to add that fourth ambulance on. And there is some changes in, uh, with some construction out on County Road Nineteen. So the, the, the truck from that usually is sitting in Al, uh, St. Michael will be moving up to Albertville, which is a good thing for Atsigo then because then they're, they're closer. So. Um, that got brought forward and then we got our regular input from Sergeant Olman's. So. And Dan will be in attendance at their next meeting. You let them know that. All right, moving on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any updates.
All right, Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, cleanup day is scheduled for this upcoming Saturday, uh, from eight AM to noon. And I will leave my updates, uh, at that.
Okay. I'll drop.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
All right. Dave.
Next, there are no updates.
And?
Mayor, just a quick update. This was something that you had contacted City Administrator Flaherty about. Uh, there was an article in the Strip this weekend regarding no mow May.
Yes.
Basically encouraging people not to mow their lawns in May so as to encourage vegetation for pollinators. Uh, I also saw the article and was going to raise it with staff. Uh, this is something we can obviously easily do simply by not implementing any code enforcement regarding grass length, uh, for the month of May. Uh, but we're also, well, I'll just let the council know that we're going to do this so that if there is any issue with it, given the weather, it's not likely anyone's going to get grass that's eight inches long. So it's probably not going to be a big deal, but it seemed like a good opportunity to, uh, do something quickly. And so. We'll work with the Assistant City Administrator to blast it out over Facebook and social media.
Yeah, um, as Dan said, I got contacted by a resident that just thought that, you know, other cities have taken this on and what was Atsigo's view on it? He obviously didn't want to get a code violation if his grass got too long. And as Dan said, I don't know that any of our grass is going to get that long, but there's always hope, right, Ron, guys? There is. Um, so, yeah, so. Any input on the campaign, the normal campaign? It, it looks like in other cities, when I was kind of Googling on other things, that you have to sign up, so that you don't get citations. I mean, it was, these are very elaborate systems on this, but, um. I would, I guess, when I think back, I, I don't know that we're already getting that many calls for citations of people with long grass in May. It's usually that, like, in the June, July that we're starting to get those, correct?
Right, yeah.
I think it's good. I mean, when you hear all those, uh, stories, watching all those nature programs on, uh, the declining bee population. Help with that. It's amazing how integral bees are as a part of our ecosystem. So.
Madam Mayor, if you wanted to, I think discussion of the meeting is fine and probably adequate, but if you wanted to further publicize this, at the, at the next meeting, you could pass a resolution specifying the. Start date and end date for suspension of enforcement of the mowing requirement so that. All residents are aware of what's going on.
Okay, so Dan, you can go ahead and draft that and Dave can review it?
Sure.
Bye, Nina. So we shouldn't have to worry about dates.
We can make note of the weather in the whereas clauses.
And then, as Dan said, Sabrina, you can work on the social media side of it to get it out to residents. And Adam will respond to.
I will get back to the rest.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else, Dan?
Uh, we do have Planning Commission next Monday. Uh, applications include the West, wastewater treatment facility, conditional use permit for the expansion. We did hold an open house for that and had two residents in attendance for that. So at least more people showed up for the comp plan. We also had the Prairie View Estates preliminary and final platform for that meeting as well.
Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Construction season getting underway. We have North Water Second, which is, is, uh, northeast quadrant of MacIver Avenue and South Thirty-Eight. And we're going to be water main looping, so there'll be some, uh, construction going on actually on the west side of MacIver where Lydia comes in. That's kind of where Seventy-First Street will connect into North Water Second. So they're going to be making a, a water connection there starting about a week and a half from now, directional boring underneath MacIver. And that will require a portion of Lydia to be, um, closed from Seventy-Second down to MacIver. And the people will have to drive up to Seventy-Third to come in to there. It really affects six homes can have that, on that portion of the street closure. But, uh, um, other people will have to not use Lydia to come in. They'll have to go another block or two to the north to go in for about two to three weeks. Those people.
Yeah, notified.
Um, we're, we're putting it on, on the web, but we should also, we're going to also then send them, um, bring to their doors to make sure they're having closures.
Yeah.
Uh, with the directions on how to get there. Um, we'll do that for the six. I don't know if we're going to, there's probably another fifty homes in there. I think when they come home one night, it's going to happen, the detour, like the sign is going to show like they continue further north to access off of MacIver.
Is there a way?
They work their way back in from the, from the north to south.
So I, I appreciate that we're going to deliver it to those six homes, but is there a way that you could get signage out the week before? Just, you know, kind of like when we do water hydrant.
Advanced warning signs, like you did about seventy-two hours before that.
Perfect. Okay, yeah, just, I mean, anything, but just that they're aware, that they're aware versus just coming home and seeing the detour.
Then I'm calling, calling Padra and Adam.
Well, or it'll be after they're closed and then we'll all be getting to house.
But everyone will.
More information is better.
Yeah, everyone will be able to access their homes.
Different, okay, yep, okay. And you said that will last a few weeks?
Yeah, two to three weeks.
Okay.
It'll start soon, I'll be.
Okay. All right.
That's all we have.
Thank you. Jason Olman's.
I didn't realize you were to me already.
Well, I had to talk to the other residents, sorry.
Uh, uh, the only things that I really have are all just going to be kind of, uh, enough traffic related. I'm the coordinator for the towards zero deaths, uh, grant, um, shift for the county. So essentially, that's federal and state grant money that comes through. So we can have, uh, extra squad cars out. Um, doing specific tasks or focusing on specific, uh, driving behaviors. Uh, so, but almost every single day this month, we do, uh, distracted driving where we'll pick one. Or a deputy will sign up for a shift. He'll put out a couple hours and specifically focus on distracted driving. Um, so we've had that, uh, over the course of the month. We also are going to have a. I don't necessarily like the term task force, but task force between Sherburne and Stearns County that we're going to be doing some traffic enforcement in some of the areas that are, um, have been. Targeted as some of their more dangerous areas in those three counties. Um, uh, that's just kind of. Comes off of last year with so many fatalities in the, uh, three county area here, so.
So do you go into, like, so, right, county deputies will be going into Sherburne and Stearns County or, and vice versa?
We're going to be trying to work that out. Obviously, there's this kind of logistics and, uh. Um, jurisdictional issues that they're trying to work out. They're trying to look at, you know, if it's, you know, Interstate Ninety-four, is there a specific place in Ninety-four that needs all three counties to be working on that or somewhere in Highway Ten? How they're related to all the different counties. Like I said, we want to make sure we're sharing the resources properly. How they're related to all the different counties. Like I said, we want to make sure we're sharing the resources properly. To answer your question, that's essentially what they're going to try to do. Um, but like I said, there's a lot of red tape they need to get through to be able to make that work.
Right.
Mainly for computer systems. How is our computer system going to be able to work with Stearns County prosecution, vice versa? So I think that's what they're trying to work out.
I guess that was going to be my question. How does the prosecution side of it work?
So, I mean, we have, any, anytime we are asked for, I mean, I could be called up to somewhere up in Lake of the Woods and technically state powers grant me the ability, if it's work related, I have jurisdictional powers up there if I'm formally requested by Lake of the Woods County. So same thing, if, if we request extra enforcement for traffic and Stearns County has jurisdiction issues, they just, like I said, just trying to work out the computer system of when, when we hit the send button, how it works with the different systems is kind of just a complicated mess for how complicated all of our computer systems are these days. It's kind of the main issue, so. Now, I don't have too much today. Let's get questions.
Does anyone have anything for Jason?
You built a good word. Thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else? And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending this evening, yeah, online and in the audience.